So we'll get started. Um, you want to call a row? Caitlin? Shannon?
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor? Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris? Gin?
Here.
Height?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for prayer and pledge to be led by Councilmember Gin.
Lord Jesus, we appreciate your help and your protection and your guidance of our city employees. We thank you for your healing power of each employee, especially our mayor. Please grant each council member wisdom and courage to vote properly on each issue tonight. And on my way to the council meeting tonight, I passed several police cars down at Exxon Station at Pershing and Main, and I asked that you would protect our policemen as they work to protect us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. And?
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Gin? Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Communications, anybody want to pull a communication? Number five? Pull number five. Anybody else? How about a motion to accept one through thirteen, except for number five? So moved. Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just, I mean, I have a comment on seven through thirteen. I don't know if we want to go ahead and accept all of them at one time, or?
You make the call. You want to go ahead and make a comment now? Go ahead.
Pull seven through thirteen then.
Okay.
Oh, twelve.
All right. So we got one, four, six, and seven. How about a motion?
So moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Number five, what do you want, Mr. Height? Read that by title only, please.
Okay. Letter to Mayor Smith. A letter to city council members regarding the expansion of responsibilities of Kenny Stevens to include Director of Traffic Services.
Okay. Good job there, Mayor. He's a fine man and a great employee, and Chris was just getting too busy. He just couldn't handle all the departments that he was working in. Kenny will take over and blend in perfectly, I think, with that group. How about a motion? About a second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Statement, Ms. Ross?
Uh, what was it? Seven through twelve?
Seven through thirteen.
It was through twelve.
Seven through twelve, okay.
Right. And these are all beer and wine applications for, I guess it's every family dollar store in North Little Rock? I was just curious, are the, I mean, the neighbors, are the neighbors notified? You know, a lot of these are in residential neighbor, well, not, I mean, they're business, but they're a lot more residential, it seems like, than other locations. So how is, how are they notified? Is there a notification, or?
You know, Chief?
There's a sign that's put up out front, the business is being considered for that, so any customer that comes in, they may have to come by. I'm saying something, so maybe twelve coming out.
Okay. Thank you. Moved to accept and file seven through thirteen. Seven through twelve.
How about a second? On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Did we do thirteen, or did we?
No.
I don't think, I think we actually pulled thirteen out. So how about a motion to accept and file thirteen?
So moved.
Give me a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda, anybody want to pull a consent agenda? We've got two pages worth. Yes.
Um, R 2025?
And R 2022.
And what, Debbie?
R 2022.
And also on, um, never mind.
All right, so we're going to pull twenty-two and twenty-five. How about a motion to accept the others? Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let's do number twenty-two.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a program agreement with the North Little Rock Police Athletic League.
Moved to accept and file, but I'd like for Shelby, we can go ahead and give a second, but Shelby to come up and just kind of give us a little bit of what all's been going on this year.
Okay. You got a second from Ms. White?
Second.
Okay.
Ross?
Hold on. Let's let Shelby tell us what's going on.
Evening, everybody. For those of y'all that don't know me, I'm from North Little Rock PD. Coach with the PAL program since I got hired here in 2009, recently took over as director in 2018. Can you hear me now? All right. Yeah, I've coached with the program since 2009, since my hire date. I've been director since 2018. It's been a great program, sports-related, football, cheer, basketball, well, actually, basketball's looking to be an added, but baseball, softball. Recently got tennis back into the program. Had an instructor come from out of state, actually dropped by the office, asked if we offered tennis. I said it had been stagnant, he said he'd take it over. So that's been going great for the past two years. And for me, this program is a personal passion. You know, I'm from McAlmond, grew up around the gangs and drugs. Graduated high school with honors, bypassed a full scholarship to Ole Miss, go to the military to help take care of my mother. And so growing up in that neighborhood and knowing what this program is for, you know, I pour my heart and soul in this program, you know. Just last year, I coached four teams myself, because everybody wanted to play for the best. Grew up playing baseball, but I mean, it's been a phenomenal program, but the nerd side of me wanted to see something educational. So what I added is what I called life skills, leadership and furthered education. And the basis of that is to, I reach out to plumbers, electricians, teachers, any career field out there that's not necessarily college-based. That way the kids know that, you know, because college is not for everyone. That way they have someone to talk one-on-one with to teach them a way to be successful without going through college. So bringing military personnel, military vet myself, so I touch on that. And we started that last year, September, started meeting in Rose City, got a good partnership with the Rose City Community Center. We're meeting out there Mondays from six to eight p.m. The first hour was strictly educational. Second hour, touch on police-rated issues. You know, especially being a black officer from the community I grew up in, and the negativity that social media puts out there, everybody see every police officer as a bad guy. So this gives us an opportunity to let the kids know that all officers are not the same. We can be trusted, we can be a friend. And so that whole hour, I mean, we're covering basics of traffic stops, home safety, you know, regardless of where you're growing up from, how to interact with the police, and pretty much just know, especially on the North Little Rock side, that we are the best of the best. And so I've had sergeants, other officers coming in, talking to these kids that they probably never see before. So the last year, we spent a great deal of money just upgrading our facilities, repairing roofs. And right now, the biggest obstacle we're facing now is, of course, lighting and security. We've got, lighting already falling in Rose City. So that's another, we've already got that in the works and getting all that prepared, but for me, I'd just like to see the program continue to grow.
Okay, Shelby, thank you so much. How about a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
How about twenty, twenty-five?
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Ozark Mission Project.
Yes.
Comments?
Yes, actually, we have Hank Godwin here today, and I would love for him to come up to the podium and just tell us a little bit about the program again this year.
Hi, Hank, how you doing?
I'm doing well.
Good. Give us an executive summary.
Yes, sir. I'm Hank Godwin, longtime resident, more than fifty years of North Little Rock, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank y'all for your, this whole council, for your involvement in our communities, every community. Ozark Mission Project has done over four hundred homes in North Little Rock. Everything from minor repair to help avoid code situations where we need to clean up the property and all that kind of thing. We did wheelchair ramps. It's a good mission. I was involved, I've been involved in it twenty-two years. It's been part of my heart, but I really wanted just to thank y'all for y'all's support, because every dollar will go to a good, good neighborhood in North Little Rock. Thank you.
Thank you, Hank.
Thank you.
I just want to say, put up your board. Heard for Hank, and as you know, that Ozark Mission Project and Hank Godwin is kind of headquartered in Lakewood Methodist, and not only do we send out a lot of kids out throughout the state, but we have a lot of kids come to North Little Rock to do that work, and I just want to commend Hank on a fine job that they continue to do up there every year, and I'm just proud that the city of North Little Rock can support them on a regular basis, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Hank, in lines of both. On the motion.
Ross?
Have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second.
And a second?
So moved.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Okay. New business? New business. Twenty twenty-nine?
A resolution amending the 2020 budget for the city of North Little Rock to reauthorize and include additional expenditures for specified departmental budgets.
Moved to accept and file.
Give me a second.
Move for adoption.
Move for adoption.
First, we need an amendment.
Okay, let's get it on the table. Ms. Ross made a motion, and Mr. Baxter seconded it. Go right ahead.
Well, I can't make the motion, so somebody needs to.
What's the amendment?
Attachment A.
Okay.
It's a correction to attachment A.
Okay, you got this, Shannon? Caitlin? Okay.
So now I need to make a, uh, motion to amend?
Motion to amend. To amend.
Okay. Motion to amend, attachment A, in.
By a second, by Ms. Ross. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt as amended?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 2030, Mayor Smith? Call it.
A resolution amending the 2020 budget for the North Little Rock Electric Department to reauthorize and include additional expenditures.
Moved to accept and file.
Second.
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
And a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 2031, Mayor Smith?
Call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 315 North Hickory Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Give me a motion.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on 315 North Hickory? Three fifteen North Hickory, seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 2007, Mayor Smith?
Call it.
An ordinance appointing North Little Rock Municipal Property Owners Improvement District Commissioners to Municipal Multipurpose Property Owners Improvement District Number Twenty-Eight. First reading.
Moved to suspend the readings.
Second.
A motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Can you read it?
Motion to adopt.
We need to read it.
An ordinance appointing North Little Rock Municipal Property Owners Improvement District Commissioners to Municipal Multipurpose Property Owners Improvement District Number Twenty-Eight. First reading.
Moved to suspend the readings.
Second.
A motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
O 2008, Mayor Smith? Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of license plate reader cameras from Sky Cop Inc., a sole-source vendor. First reading.
Would you suspend the ratings?
Second.
On the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor, before we, can we get an explanation, just a brief explanation of these? Sure.
You're not putting any of those in my neighborhood, are you?
Chief, go ahead and tell them about the surveillance system in that same town.
Okay, license plate readers, we've had for several years now at various locations. We've added some through the years. We're up to seventeen currently. They are in all parts of the city, and I tell you, anybody really, we don't care if you know where they're at. Purpose of them is just to help solve crimes, and they've done that as well. They have alerts on them so that I can have my phone set that if a stolen vehicle passes by JFK McCain, it will text me immediately and let me know what direction it was going and what the vehicle was. So it's a great tool that we have. These are actually the ones we're getting now, replacing old ones that we've had that just need to be replaced. They used to be well over $20,000 each, so the price has really come down. And then on the other, that's coming up next, is the camera system that we have, the seven that we're purchasing, they're really replacement cameras as well from dated cameras that we've had, but they're stationary cameras that are in various locations around the city as well, and we use those. Crime happens, we come back and look at the video and see if we can see what came by at a certain time to come back if it's a shooting, a vehicle break-in, whatever it might have been.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Gin?
Thank you.
Are these the same vendors for both of them?
Uh, no, ma'am, they're not.
Which ones are new?
Uh, the license plate readers are from Sky, um, Sky Cop Incorporated, yes, and the other ones are from Crime Point.
They're both new vendors?
Uh, well, we've been using Sky Cop, but we're trying to get everything on the same system is what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Where are we? On the motion.
So moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
O 2009?
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of a surveillance system from Crime Point Inc., a sole-source vendor. First reading.
Moved to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
O 2010, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance prohibiting signs in the public right-of-way, amending and repealing certain provisions of the North Little Rock Code. First reading.
Uh, we're gonna hold it. There are several council members have some comments and questions, and I just think we need to work that out before we run it, so we're gonna hold it.
Thank you very much.
O 2011, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 1300 West Fourth Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R-4 zoning classification to PUD zoning classification by amending ordinance number 7697. First reading.
We're gonna move to suspend all readings on this.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
O 2012, Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 9130 as amended by ordinance number 9154, which granted a conditional use to allow a tire shop and an auto detail business in a C-4 zone for property located at 923 East Broadway Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Moved to suspend all readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
About a motion?
Moved to adopt.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
O twenty twelve, Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number nine one three zero as amended by ordinance number nine one five four, which granted a conditional use to allow a tire shop and an auto detail business in a C four zone for property located at nine twenty-three East Broadway Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Question?
We're removing the, that number eight, it said no auto repair other than those associated with removal, replacement tires, is this gonna be a full auto shop or, I guess I was just kinda confused on what this is?
It's my understanding, it's a tire shop and a detail, but Mayor, we can ask Sean to come up.
Larry, is this yours?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, come up and tell us what you're doing.
Councilman, thank you for being here tonight, I'm Larry Carpenter. The major purpose of this garage is still gonna be ninety-nine percent, ninety-five percent tire work, and, uh, I do have coverings ordered for the container in the back, I've got coverings ordered, and the nursery called me two days ago, the truckload of trees are in, which I must, uh, putting along the side of the property there, so I'm about to get cleaned up, looking better, uh, so it'll be a minimum amount of any maintenance or car repair at all, very minimal, and we know that to do that, we'd have to pull it in the bay, so we're good with all that.
So it will be auto repair, we'll also be doing, I mean, when you say auto repair, I mean, is this mechanical, because it removed all of the auto repair and other, those associated with removal, replacement tires, all that's been removed, so what type of auto repair, I mean, bodywork, mechanical, or?
Yeah, no, it's not bodywork at all, it would be like, uh, brake work, spark plug, and, and this is really, uh, as it would come up, just miscellaneous type auto repair, nothing big, there's two bays inside, it's all set up properly to handle all this, so it's just an additional use for him to try to make enough money to maintain and be able to stay there.
Sean, you got a thought on this, I see you moving up this way.
Sure. So, property's on C four, so auto repair is allowed by right, but when the conditional use got approved a year and a half ago, or whenever, uh, at that point in time, the applicant felt that he was okay with giving up that right, so, so that statement was added, saying no auto repair would be done, so now he's coming back, and now that they thought about the process, there might be some auto work, and he doesn't want to get in trouble, so he's asking to be, the right to be given back to him, which is allowed everywhere on C four.
So it was by right to begin with?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, uh, we have a motion? And a second? On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
O twenty thirteen, Councilmember Harris?
Uh, please call.
Is that objection? Okay.
An ordinance accepting streets and drainage facilities within Phase One of Grandview Place in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
How about a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Questions? On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
O twenty fourteen, Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.